I've seen.
Oh, you have sent this Facebook page?
So, but I will. I don't know who's, no, someone said it to me, I don't know who it even was, but I look forward to seeing one.
Oh, maybe Eldred, he was, he friends with them, I don't know, but oh, if, oh, it was beautiful, my daughter got married Sunday night.
Fantastic, congratulations. Congratulations, fantastic, fantastic.
I have, I have a few pictures.
Right, we'll try and end the few minutes early though.
No, literally, I only have a few because I just took pictures of the ceremony.
Yeah.
Because people were saying, bring back pictures, but like, they were paying this glorious professional photographer to do the whole thing, so I just like.
Sure. No, it's time to live in the moment and we'll catch the photos afterwards, so congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Let's call our meeting to order, um, do we have any public comment? Uh, fantastic, so I would presume there would be no committee responses as well, uh, the minutes for this meeting? Any corrections, additions?
Nope, I'm good.
Approved by you as well, Pat?
I, I must admit, I did not get to look at them and I'm gonna trust my colleagues, I get, we got that like last night.
Understandable, Maury and I both approved the minutes, I, I did look at them, they were fine. Uh, and so then let's jump into right to our discussion items and there would be, there will be one agenda item to add or, actually, not to add because we do have the six thousand series on here, we can get to that in a minute. Um, but, agenda item four point one is policy zero one five five, student harassment and bullying prevention intervention. It is in many regards our version of DASA or includes our version of DASA. And so, um, should I just hand it over to you Amanda, how would you like to proceed?
Uh, I'm happy to, to walk us through like we did last time at the definitions and then sort of open it up for comment and conversation. So, um, if you remember, there's the policy, which we did, I think, three meetings ago. The last meeting, we started with, um, R, the regulation and, um, we just got through essentially the definitions, making sure that we, um, we knew what we were talking about in terms of the law and we agreed on, um, the aspects that we were trying to prevent, intervene, right, and make sure that we had safe spaces for young people, so, um, that includes the definitions for discrimination, bullying, cyberbullying, harassment and hazing. And so, what we then did, um, was I went through the policy, which was a number of pages long, and tried to look for redundancies and language that I felt maybe either was unclear or that really could be restated in a manner that aligned more with the code of conduct. Um, and, you know, it's our efforts, um, around equity and inclusion. And so, you'll see that there are a number of topics that fall under R, again, it's still lengthy. But we start with prevention, right, that's the foundation of the work that we would want to do for dignity act. Um, making sure that people understand, um, you know, that we would never wanna get there, right? We'd never wanna get to a violation. So what will it take for us as a district that we could do, um, in our efforts to prevent compromises to the dignity act? Next is training.
So can I just jump in for a quick second so folks know the document we're talking about, the paper copy we have?
Sure. Absolutely.
Um, we're talking about, uh, not R, right, for right now, we're talking about the related title policies. Is that what you're going through? I just wanna make sure I'm on the, the right page.
It is policy zero one one five dash R.
Gotcha, so beginning with the table of contents and then going on to, gotcha, I just wanna make sure, okay.
Yep, so, so there should be a page and a half about of definitions for R. And then, starting with prevention was the work that, that I pulled together for this meeting. Um, so there are more bullets points than there were last, in the prior, um, uh, policy. Um, mainly because there were sections of the policy that actually lend themselves nicely to prevention efforts. Um, after prevention is training, right, so training really is about training for school employees and volunteers. Um, and so, that, um, there was some specificity to that and I actually eliminated some of it 'cause I feel that, um, there's a lot of opportunities in the work that we're doing with Dr. Holly and many others that, um, actually, we can enhance our, our trainings and I didn't wanna kind of, you know, make it, uh, I didn't wanna leave out some, an opportunity, so I actually left a little bit more open. So that was the prevention pieces, right, solid training and then professional strategies in the classroom and in your buildings. Um, and then intervention, right, so a moment of disruption, a moment of potential violation of the DASA act, then what would that look like, right, so there's things in the law that are required, we have to have dignity act coordinators, there is a timeliness and a how-to for reporting incidents. There is an expectation of confidentiality, um, that goes with the reporting, so that's why that, that followed that. Um, and then it goes on to, um, once those reports are brought in, then how do we investigate and or resolve, both, right, investigate and then hopefully resolve, um, what we've, what our findings are. Um, if you're not satisfied with the findings, how then do you appeal the DASA investigation outcome? Right, and then, a statement about retaliation, prohibition of retaliation. Uh, because that is for staff and students, we, you're right, if, once you, uh, you've done the investigation and you've, you determine what, um, that looks like, whether it be a safety plan or discipline or, right, like, we don't want anyone feeling that they have the right to retaliate against someone else because someone spoke up, they were brave enough to say something. Um, so that language is in there. And then, um, discussions again, related, directly related to law about how we would disseminate this policy itself so that people would know that this exists. So that was the work that was done, I think we probably shaved off maybe a page and a half, but I don't think we lost any content, I think we just streamlined, um, the content. The one lingering comment that I did put in the Google document that I was working on was, you know, I, I, we just ran out of time in terms of aligning it or looking at the code of conduct and there may be opportunities for us to just cite the code of conduct as opposed to having the words in the policy. Um, so that was one missed opportunity that I'm sorry I didn't get to, but, um, we could definitely have that conversation maybe in tandem with the code of conduct conversation that we're having. So, this is a refreshed dignity act policy that I put before you. Or.
The regulation.
Uh, regulation, for editing, for editing now.
Um, questions from my board colleagues' comments?
I, just as far as the, the formatting goes and, and the headings, just what I find a little bit, um, kind of bit confusing is you start with definitions and then between hazing and prevention, which is not a definition, I think we need something. Maybe just prevention colon and then, um, or, or prevention of har- bullying and harassment. And then, um, may, and for training, maybe a longer, um, you know, training, um, training for, uh, for, well, it's employees and volunteers or, um, you know, some, some, some kind of phrase there that, that makes, 'cause, you know, you see, you see, hazing shall mean and then prevention is the cornerstone of the district's effort and I just think for visual clarity.
I would go as so far as to say is that I would add the definitions at the end of the regulation.
Ah.
I would just move that entire section to the end.
Right.
And begin right with the prevention and that way, as you say, Pat, the language is much more consistent and then there's almost a natural break.
Yes.
And we could even highlight the definitions a little bit more, but for me,
Right.
it'd be easier for read the part of the regulation at that with the case, Maury, you seem to agree with that as well?
Yes, I do, I was gonna say that, uh, so now I'm looking at this, so, okay, so the last of the definitions would be hazing and that whole list would be at the end. Um, since we have a colon after intervention, should we also have a colon after prevention and training?
Uh, for consistency, probably, yes, right?
Yeah. Or take the colon out. And maybe just make, um, like inter, so intervention is, uh, you know, so part of intervention are the things that follow. Um, and so maybe those headings of prevention, training and intervention need to be larger or italicized or.
Or italicized or something.
Yeah, or something, yeah.
Is, is everything that follows intervention related to intervention? Or does that stop at the end of investigation and resolution procedure? 'Cause then you have appealing, retaliation prohibited and policy dissemination. And I don't, does that all belong under intervention?
It's a really good point, Heather, and I, I'm gonna just chime in, I'm wondering if the appointment of the dignity act coordinator actually goes first?
Yeah.
'Cause that really is something that you do at the annual meeting in July, right, so, and they're the stewards of all of this work. They actually are the stewards of prevention and they are the stewards of intervention, right? So I want, so it really is, the dignity act coordinator themselves is not an intervention strategy, it's actually a mandate of the law. So that actually maybe is the first action step. And then they, then we do prevention, right, and training, 'cause those would precede hopefully any, um, potential violations to the law. And then you have interventions which, um, or intervention, I don't even know if intervention is actually necessary.
I was wondering whether we just take out that word and it's, and then the paragraphs follow a line of procedures.
Yeah.
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 Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Like, almost like a timeline.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. I think I followed.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
All right, so the idea would be to move the appointment of the dignity, the DASA coordinators, move that first, was that also what I heard?
Yes, everything's okay with that, I like it. For the reasons that you've said, that's, that's where the activity begins.
Mm-hmm.
And we would fix the very first sentence to make it zero one one five. And Tricia, I'm trying to, uh, capture all of these changes as well, so just so you know. So if I'm filing correctly, right, we move appointment of dignity act coordinators to the beginning. Next would then be prevention, training, reporting incidents, confidentiality, investigation, resolution procedures, appealing, retaliation prohibited, policy dissemination and then at the very end, definitions. If I moved too quick, are folks still with me?
Yeah, I know, that's, that is exactly how I understand our edits.
Right, so we shaved the page, it would be six pages and it'd be a little bit more clear for folks to follow. Amanda, and I haven't been able to look at the language yet, but, um, can you talk about where some of this language came from? Um, are, are we writing this, are we borrowing language from other policies, from the DASA act itself? Can you just speak to that?
Sure, so I actually was, um, I supported, I think, the, in 2012, when the dignity act first came into being in New York State, I was working at Bosie's at the time, working all over the state to support policy development around the dignity act and doing a lot of these pieces, I was actually, my job was to go into school districts and to support the dignity act rollout in everything, preventing, prevention education, training for staff, um, policy development. So, this, some of this is from the original DASA policy work that was done at that time. And then, um, as, you know, um, guidance documents, um, were developed, policy manuals always lagged behind the, right, when the law was enacted. I did refer to, um, some of the recommendations from state ed regarding the segments of the policy that need to be part of that. And obviously, because of the training itself, there's a lot of requirements of the dignity act, like the timeline of pieces and the coordinator and all that. So that's where that came from, so, the, I will say that's the prevention listing, right? Um, they do recommend that you try to give, um, you know, where appropriate examples. So that's why you'll see under prevention, um, you know, if I'm a, if I'm a parent and I'm new to the district, what does that mean, what is my child gonna be learning about, what will that look like in a classroom or in a building? And again, I tried to use language that says things like the lead to those, that, that list, right? The components of such an effort can involve the following, so you don't ever actually, um, in this work, it should evolve based on, um, the competencies and of the, of the, the classroom and the developmental age and stage. And, um, also, sometimes, um, the intensity of the effort depending on the cohort that you might have, right? So I wanted some opportunity to be able to look at that as a reference but not as a, we will, right, this will be incorporated. But again, the dignity act coordinator, when you, you read that, they sort of are the ones that are gonna try to, um, be the ones to roll out what is appropriate so that you hit all those categories in the dignity act, okay? Uh, training, again, like you saw, that, that I kept very open because you really can do lots of, you can have so many community partners, you're really gonna have student-led training, uh, for, you should, it could be driven by survey data, it could be, right, like, uh, there's just so much that could add to that, the richness of the training pieces. Um, there's not a lot of creativity with reporting and confidentiality. Um, and investigations I did try to put there because I think the predictability and timeliness for investigations for families specifically that are going through this with their young person, if, especially if they are the targets of these behaviors, you want some predictability for them. You want them to know what that process looks like, um, because I think that that just helps them, um, to understand that the board has a regulation that we follow, right, for that. So that language is a little bit stronger than the, the can include.
So one thing I think we're gonna need to do is connect with, um, Kate as well.
Sure.
To make sure that we reference any, um, law or case law that just should be present for this to, as a matter of reference. Pat and Maury, I don't know if you think that's a good idea as well, just, we've been trying to do that more and more often, right? To give reference of case law or ed law. Um, otherwise, uh, I think I know I would need some time just to go through and read and we can see if we have time later on today, if that's something that we wanna do and go through. But I imagine a good portion of this is, um, standard language that we may wanna keep and not alter given its importance. Last time we went through this policy was eight years ago, so it is definitely time for review.
And I, I do note, um, in the electronic version of the minutes and attached documents, Title Nine Policies, March twenty twenty two, we have overlap or redundancies with especially policy fifty twenty and fifty twenty point one and the procedures for policy fifty twenty and fifty twenty point one. Um, and also sexual harassment of employees, policy ninety one ten point two, that we will not just be simplifying this policy, but we will be able to retire other policies that are no longer relevant because this one policy, set of policy and procedures covers them all. And that is also, I think, beneficial. Will provide greater consistency and greater coverage.
Uh, yeah, that I completely agree with you. Too many places in our policy book that we have duplicate policies or policies that overlap. And part of the reason why we've been trying to go through is to clean up some of that especially get rid of some of the more outdated policies we've had. So, yeah, I think that, that seems to be something that you've all, you've started to take a look at, Amanda, at least as I see it for the board doc links of those other policies. Um, but in terms of the regulation, uh, how best we wanna proceed? The six-page document that is zero one one five dash R.
I think it makes sense for us to prob- probably not right now go through it and suggest any edits, but if there are any edits, I think they should be made before it goes to Kate. 'Cause otherwise, we would just have to send the edits back to her.
Yeah.
I, I'm seeing a lot of plain, plain language and straightforward chronology here, so I don't, I don't think this is similar to a lot of other older policies where we have to significantly rework.
Sure.
Uh, the language.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so are we committing that we'll take a look at it, um, outside of today's meeting? And if we have any changes to send recommendations to Amanda and then ask Amanda to go with Kate? We don't necessarily need to, uh, have, uh, another policy committee if we wanted to put it on a board agenda once it's done, though we, we could as well. But it also begs the question if we want zero one one five and zero one one five dash R to travel to the board together. So, and maybe, maybe once this gets finalized, we just hold on to it until we can get down to the next one. Hopefully, zero one one five, the policy should not be six pages, though the document you have here from Amanda is a fifty-two page long document that includes all of those overlapping policies that Pat was just talking about as well. So that'll be fun.
Now, in this policy oh one one five,
Yeah.
it begins with a list of definitions and if they're in the regular, modify that.
We did, we're gonna, we're gonna delete that, I mean, that's part of the reason why we put it into the regulations.
Yes. Right, okay, I, we have that on the electronic.
Yeah.
Um, right.
Yeah, and the thought was to, um, for the most part, and maybe we even have some of the legal references uh, at the bottom of the current zero one one five. Again, it'd be interesting to talk with Kate to see what is, you know, outdated or needs to be updated. But, Amanda, if I'm not mistaken, we were talking about having a very similar boilerplate to what is there before the definitions or something similar to that that also kept it broad and pointed to the regulation, right? So the policy itself would only be a couple paragraphs long, right, and then make reference to the regulation or.
Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at oh one one five R and everything that I see there except gender identity, um, is contained in this policy and if I, in, in this regulation and if I swing down to policy. Where's the policy itself?
Four, zero one one five?
Yeah, what, what page?
Oh, uh, the PDF that you're referring to. That's a great question.
Where, where do you have the rewrite here, I can send me an email.
It's, uh, page, page three.
Oh, there it is, um. Three?
That's what I have here.
That's what I thought, I, I was going. Okay, oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, so we could basically just have the one, two, three, four paragraphs above descrip- above definitions as the, as the new policy.
We, I have the rewrite of the policy here, um. I mean, I'm trying to send it quickly via email for all of you. Okay, it's sent, see if you can get that.
Can we send it to Tricia as well, let's see if we can put it up on the screen?
Sure can. Absolutely, Tricia, if you don't have it, I can get it to, send it to you right now. Yeah, I think that was three minutes ago. There you go, Tricia. And that we did, um, again, we sort of took the language of the policy from a number of years ago.
Yeah.
Um, and tried to enhance the tone.
Okay.
But it ends, it's only, it's three paragraphs?
Yeah.
That's all it is?
Yes, and it's.
Can we did go through this policy, right?
Mm-hmm.
We did, yeah, okay, that's what I, that's what I thought. I mean, we could go through this, is it on our agenda? It is?
Yes.
Just look at those. Discussion item four point one, policy oh one one five.
Yeah. So more of, it's more of a discussion item because we did go through this policy at our last meeting and then asked for the regulation, the definitions to be moved for the, to the regulation.
Right.
And then including the steps, um, to follow what our current process was to be in compliance with DASA, as opposed to what we did in two thousand fourteen.
Okay, so I, I am good with this rewrite of the policy. Me too.
Fantastic. Um, I wouldn't put it forth yet to the board until we have a conversation about the related policies as well as anything that need, need, may need to be included in the code of conduct when that discussion happens as well. But if we can hold on to both of these, zero one one five and zero one one five dash R, I think that they're in a pretty good place, that needs to go for a first reading and conversation with the, with the board. All right, we're gonna catalog these, put them someplace not in board docs, we'll figure that out.
See, what the rewrite on board docs or no?
Um, we probably should put it on board docs, yes, just in case we're, what we're looking for, we know where to probably do. And, uh, to Pat's point, the current, the definitions that we discussed in two thousand fourteen, if I'm not mistaken, uh, I am mistaken, so we'll leave it alone. All right, additional questions, conversations about zero one one five or zero one one five dash R? Fantastic, we will try to wrap them up and see where we're at and keep in mind as we go through. It would, it is helpful for us, for folks to see on that document that includes the fifty-two pages, Pat, all the policies that you have outlined as well, so, um, Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm under the impression that DASA is primarily, um, uh, a law protecting students.
It is a law protecting students.
So it does not get to our employees.
Correct, no.
Um, which will need an additional policy to talk about, on harassment and bullying, which we already have on the books, but we need to make sure that gets updated as well. It's been a while since some of these policies, I'm trying to take a look. Yeah, two thousand eleven, for policy equal education opportunities and harassment of students. I may imagine that we may even be deleting some of these policies unless they are, unless they are unique, right? So, I would imagine zero one one five and, and the regulation would take the place of, um, education, equal education opportunity and harassment of students. What am I wrong about that?
Thank, um.
How about this, we don't need an answer today.
Yeah, let me look it over with Lily and Dan, 'cause I think the three of us, because Lily works with the, right, one of the harassment pieces, I do the dignity act bullying, Dan does the code of conduct. I think, you know, and, and I know, I think the document that you're referring to, Lily pulled together.
Yeah.
So, and I think she had a slide deck as well that was sort of a summary of, of the policies that were related, so let's revisit that.
Uh, sure, I don't think I saw the slide deck, but, um, Amanda, you're fantastic.
Great.
All right, if no other questions, we'll, we'll try to figure out where all those policies go. I'm just checking my email to make sure that I didn't miss the, the slide deck. Um, Lily is not with us today, but there is, uh, I'm going to play, I vote, Dan is here as well who's been helping us with a proposed plan for the code of conduct. And, uh, how about you take it over, Dan, and tell us where we're at?
Sure, sure, um, uh, last time we talked a little bit about, you know, uh, Sure, um, last time we talked a little bit about, you know, where we've been. Might be good to just go over the history really quick. But in two thousand nineteen, there was a creation of the Code of Conduct Advisory Council. That was the first step. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, there were a lot of monthly meetings with students, staff and families. To find, define the purpose and review models. I came on in two thousand twenty, and that's when, you know, in the beginning of the pandemic, we created the Code of Conduct addendum to help us provide guidance during that time. Two thousand twenty, twenty-one, we had monthly meetings with community members, union leaders, to write belief statements and more. And then Anne and Sean did a great job on the, in the summer of two thousand twenty-one, last summer. Or actually, I guess, two summers ago, where there was a Code of Conduct Writing Institute. But there was a lot of work and it was, again, it was another collaborative initiative with the union, with district leadership, with teachers. And then we have a draft. We've had a lot of, excuse me, we've had a lot of different feedback sessions with students, families and community. We're planning on doing more feedback sessions as well. And so where we're at right now is we've taken a lot of the feedback in. We've done, we've looked at the language. We've shifted, you know, the document shifted to restorative practices. That's always been its goal. Talking about, you know, why exclusion doesn't work. We were more specific about informal restorative practices such as circle processes, community, school services. We get a lot of feedback about cellphone usage. So we spent some time this summer writing some specifics around cellphones. But we also included some examples of best practices in classrooms. That could help with cellphone usage as well. And we're gonna, we're gonna do another round of getting feedback from families. Or from families, from staff, from students and from community members as well. Lily did a great job of working with the Winds, Maisha Wynn and Tori, her husband. And really, really looking at restorative justice. And how we can implement practices in schools to address inequities. And the Winds will be, the Winds will also be coming to work with students, which we're really excited about. In the next few months to get some of their feedback as well to incorporate into our code of conduct. It's a working, it's a working document. We're always getting feedback to add. I think that's kind of where we're at.
The drafts will be available for folks to take a look at, right? I know there's some formatting that's taken place with some folks, right? And so when, when may we have a draft available to send out to folks?
That is a good point. So our communication team is also, I mean, I don't, I mean to point to you guys, I'm sorry.
No, no, right, Katie.
Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Caitlin, but yeah.
We've been told by October thirteenth.
Yeah.
And that is October.
October thirteenth.
So.
Which means October eleventh is our next board meeting. Which would mean then the twenty-fifth is the last meeting we have of the month. Which would be the, and time that we could announce a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
If the board agrees and if we get enough feedback from the board that we can make the announcement. With the understanding that even that document that's presented to the community as part of the public hearing is still in draft form.
Right.
Still can be changed and most likely will be changed, given the feedback.
Right, yeah, we'll be getting lots of, lots of feedback. I, I just wanted to thank Caitlin and Margot for, for also working on the draft. We're really happy to have them on the team and, and supporting this work, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
And more than that, I know more than I had a conversation, Pat, about some of the editing and sort of proofing. Some of the language was changing back and forth between things like our students or the students. So the voice seemed to me to keep changing, the audience kept changing. And I know that Caitlin and Margot have gone through or continue to go through and take a look at the document. But we can send out a link as well. The only concern we have at the moment about adding current edits is some of the formatting that's taking place. As a believer that people are much more likely to actually read the document if it's well, if it's in a better format than a simple Google document. And so we want to make sure we have some sort of PDF that's even branded, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, it is October eleventh, we'll have it.
Great.
You have it done by October eleventh?
Thank you.
Which would still put us out forty-five days. If we follow typical board processes, it would need two readings after that to be adopted. And I don't think we should adopt it with a first reading.
No.
Not a document like this. And I do know that Lily and Dan have some plans to, for lack of a better word, take it on the road again as well.
Yeah.
Right?
That's right. Yeah, yeah, we have some dates, we have some dates set up for the next, in the next few weeks. Nights, afternoons, different times, so we can get feedback from the community.
I think there are three additional points for me would be essential. One, as part of that Writing Summer Institute. We also brought in Lynn to talk to us about some of our data around suspensions. And the data was pretty clear that there is a lack of, I don't want to say, there's disproportionate
Yeah.
discipline that's taking place in our school district. And primarily around a couple of data points. But one is socioeconomic status or free reduced lunch, if I recall correctly. There is a significant gender imbalance, which coincides with national data. And there's definitely disproportionate suspensions based on race and ethnicity as well. So the document was trying to say restorative practices, which is part of being an anti marginal, marginalizing and anti racist school district. So that's one concept Lynn helped us work through as well and try to find some different options. It does have a sentence in the beginning, the last time I saw it, that the goal of this code of conduct is to eliminate out of school suspensions. Even while New York State will mandate out of school suspension for certain offenses. So that part we recognize, right? That out of school suspensions will happen because New York State mandates them. But we're gonna try as a district to use that as a last resort. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, yeah, we want to move, we want to move as much away from exclusion as possible.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
And I really appreciate Lily's comments that whenever this gets adopted, that would then become year zero. Not year one, right? That will sort of be in the start to make sure we provide training. And that it will be an ever-changing document, even though we've been working on it since all of us have been on the board. But this will be, this will at least push us in a different direction. The last thing that does cause me some concern is in the current code of conduct. It was, I don't know, more, what, fifteen, eighteen policies that are in the current code of conduct?
I know, I'm sorry, yeah, I know, but it's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yes.
And we would have to do some work to either eliminate those policies or put them someplace in this code, whatever that looks like. And I think I have a list, I definitely have a list somewhere that I can send everybody of what the current code looks like. So questions, comments, thoughts, suggestions? I know silence is not agreement, but we're gonna move, we're gonna keep it moving.
I, I can't add, I don't have any suggestions, I am in agreement with what you propose.
And we will get out the drafts to the board as soon as possible. And hopefully prior to larger announcements, so in case board members have some questions as well, we can get that out. Fantastic. Then the last item we have on our agenda for today is the six thousand series. And I know earlier today Amanda sent out a document that is related to the six thousand series, but not all the six thousand series.
Correct.
So I don't know if we've had, if it went to all policy.
I don't remember.
No, it did not. So, and because it was, it was so draft, I wasn't sure if we were gonna tackle it this evening. But what I can do is I'll send it to the group. Essentially what I, I think there was a request a while ago, and I know there was a request for the six thousand series. But also to look at the old internal audits. And when I say old, it could be just prior year or a couple of years ago. And to try to go through them and create a list of recommendations that the auditors gave to us as a school district in terms of policy changes or creations that needed to be made. And so let me, let me just share that. And I don't know if you have rights to that document, if you can share that, but let me just get it in there right now.
I will sign in right now.
Let's see here, I got it, wait, I got it right here. So, let's see, yeah. And again, this was late in. Okay. So it is now shared.
The good thing about some of these policies, well, one, we haven't explored them in a while. But oftentimes, they were relatively small changes to update, you know, cash money amount as an example, right?
Right.
Or being much more specific about who is allowed to receive money in the school district or take money in. You know, like that was one, I know we had a conversation by Audit Committee. We're gonna have fun tomorrow night wherever at our Audit Committee.
Right.
Doing some work is.
Well, also, just, there is a bit of confusion about who's on the Audit Committee.
No, there should not be.
Well, I always thought that Karen was on the Audit Committee because that's one of the ones that she requested. And, and that's what it also says on the webpage. And in fact, there's a number of either omissions or irregularities on the webpage in terms of liaison and committees, so we really need to, to straighten that out. But yeah, I had definitely thought that Karen was on the Audit Committee.
We can follow up with that, my understanding.
And I think Karen thought she was on the Audit Committee.
I will follow up with Karen as well. My understanding was that the Audit Committee was gonna be you, myself and Chris Mallon.
Yeah, I mean, I only recently, you know, said, yes, I would do it. We wouldn't need another community member if we had three board members.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But I'll follow up with Karen as well.
Yeah.
And Reckon.
And Reckon, I believe, is still, still on the committee. The questions, have we reached out to her about tomorrow's meeting?
And then also, yeah.
She did give an invite.
Yeah. Speaking of where, Audit Committee, can that be an entirely Zoom meeting? Do we have to have an in-person quorum? That's my understanding.
That we have to have an in-person quorum?
Yeah.
That is correct.
So, so Karen was inquiring about the meeting, including, you know, whether it was a, I think there's confusion, like, you know, tonight Chris said he's not, he's gonna be virtual for the special voting meeting.
I fixed that, it'll be in person.
Okay. Uh, yeah.
It'll be in person.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, I think, I did get off topic from where we're talking in terms of this list, but we'll just clarify now. We have had legal clarity. Any committee that has been officially approved by the board is considered to be a working committee that does work of the board.
Right.
To be a committee that does the work of the board, it needs to have a quorum of the committee to be meeting in person.
Okay.
So at any point in time, there needs to be at least two board members of any committee present.
Right.
The third board member can be virtual.
But it would be under the same conditions.
Under the same condition that upon.
A significant reason.
And we have to.
Not as communicated.
Yep, we'd have to do all of that to notify in advance, to
Right.
the minutes then change in terms of whether or not it's transcripts, there's a host of things.
Right.
And that will be on the next full voting meeting for us to make sure that we all have that understanding.
Okay.
That's, that's coming up soon, but yes, that's what happened. So Karen still can participate virtually tomorrow.
Okay.
As long as you and I, or you and Chris, or Chris and I are present tomorrow. And I plan on being here tomorrow in person.
Okay.
So this document that we have was, Amanda, you looking from some of our previous audits and seeing what the recommendation was for either the creation of various policies and/or the updating of various policies.
Right, and somewhere in my brain, I thought that was a request of the Audit Committee. It might have been
It was.
three or four minutes, okay, good, good, yeah. So here it is.
Right, and so, did you send something?
I sent it, yes, I shared a document with you, Marra, let me just make sure I that I got through way. It's to the ICSD address.
Oh, okay.
But let me do it to the other one.
Well, it's okay, I didn't sign on to ICSD.
Here we go, it should be now in your Gmail.
Got it.
It appears from this, and I think I remember this from the Audit Committee, that Zach Lynn will be busy trying to address some of these policies as well. I'm sure we, are there practices that we're already doing in place that addresses, you know, just capturing out paper or?
I, I would, that is why I put the collaborators on there, because I did not want to answer for the folks that this would have really fallen to their department and/or, right? Like, I don't know if there is an internal handbook and maybe guide some of the practices that the audit. But it's definitely not in board policy, right? So, so what I just tried to capture here was maybe the folks that we would invite to these meetings. I'm happy to share this with both, you know, with the folks that are listed in the collaborators column. And let them know that this will be work that, you know, we should be thinking about and, and maybe developing some draft policy language around.
That part works for me.
Happy to do it.
And it will, and Amanda, not to continue to put more on your plate. But it still would mean that we need to go through the six thousand series.
Yes.
Thankfully, there aren't that many policies there, but it is all about fiscal management.
Yep.
And make sure that those are up to date. Some of them have not been touched in fifteen, oh, nineteen ninety-two, there's a policy thirty years old.
Right.
We may want to look at it.
Right, not a problem. Do you want me to start to tackle one or two per meeting?
That would be great.
Okay.
And I don't think that they're excessive, as well. Well, I can't look at this one.
Catch me before budget season.
Yeah.
That's the way to do it, right?
We have a policy from ninety-two that talks about affordability to lease buses, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you want to keep that available.
Yeah.
Definitely keep that available.
Right.
Right?
So it may not take any change, or maybe it's just an updating.
That's right.
So that's an interesting thought, and I'm just asking this to Moira and Pat, is looking at it. So there's an example where we have a policy that's a single sentence. And it says, the city school board of education offers its buses for rent or lease as provided under education law. Right, and it was last revised in nineteen ninety-two. Even if we don't change the language, should we, should we update it and say, so it's revised in twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Right, so that at least we can indicate that we've looked at it, right? As opposed to just leaving it thirty years old.
Are we ever leased our buses or have we?
Not in my tenure. We definitely allow for usage of our buses, right? By our drivers, by our people, contract them. We do not, to my knowledge, give a vehicle to be driven by a non-ICSD employee.
That's right.
That should probably go into the policy.
Yeah.
Because to, yeah, I mean.
This is why we have fun at PolicyPad.
It's one of many reasons we have fun at Policy. Yeah, I mean, yes, the, the, the driver has to go with the bus.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Like, you're not gonna lease one to me to drive around.
As much as we would love to see you in a yellow bus.
Well, you know.
And unless you got your CDL.
When I retire.
Then please join us early in the mornings.
Well, that would be interesting if that's already something that's codified in the ed law that it. Well, that would be interesting if that's already something that's codified in the law that it cites as well. I mean, it may say that as well, but again, things that we should, you know, confirm.
Sure.
All right, so you're gonna do one or two policies. We have zero one five, zero one one five, we're gonna take a look at to see if there's any small language changes. We have zero one one five dash R, which goes along with that. We will start to look at the related policies that Lily put together. That's the fifty-two page document that folks have that include, right, the hundred series, the five thousand series, the nine thousand series, some of those policies. And we'll try to wrap those up together from there. Code of Conduct, we're making more headway than we've made in some time, even though it's a slow process. But hopefully it'll put us on the right path. And then we'll start getting into the six thousand series with some fun. And then that would only speak, that would only do this with the nine thousand series that we have not at least reviewed as a policy committee in eight years. Not bad, though.
It's only eight years.
It's only been, it's been around for longer than eight years, but we started going through from zero, policy zero to policy ten thousand, whatever that is.
Yeah.
In this, in that time period. All right. I did have a question, it, it was asked of us, and I don't know if this is the form to ask, but there was a question about whether or not the district should consider, and it's in DASSA, about a retaliation or anti-retaliation policy, something that we may wanna consider at some point in time. Did you do some research on those, Moira?
I can't remember.
All right, so it's nothing that we need to put into the minutes at this time or on an agenda. We can, we'll take a look and see what that looks like.
You mean a general scandal over retaliation policy as opposed to this paragraph?
Yeah, or make sure that that paragraph is also put into a paragraph, our, our policy around staff and faculty as well. So it doesn't necessarily need to be a standalone, we just need to make sure that we include it in other policies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's in, if you search for retaliation, right, so it's in the sexual harassment policy, the financial misconduct whistleblower policy, the, both DASSA policies and then the corporate compliance program, which is interesting, but we'll obviously.
Yep, so. Uh, anything else you wanna do unless we're gonna have fun for a half hour until our special meeting starts?
Is our special meeting starting at six thirty?
That's what it says.
Oh. I didn't realize that. I thought we'd be done before six forty-four.
We will be done before six forty-four.
Fourteen minutes?
I, I am committed, I am committed to a seven-minute meeting.
Oh, okay.
Which is why we canceled the HR meeting because Yom Kippur begins in six forty-four.
Oh.
And so.
I'm committed, Moira, I'm committed.
Okay.
There's three agenda items, two probably do not require a conversation and one does.
What are the three of the?
Uh, student report, personnel report, and the selection of a delegate.
Of the, the voting delegates.
Yep. So, but if there's nowhere about policy, we can bring the meeting to a close. Or, and we have our path forward for next meeting, we'll work with Tricia. Tricia, I'll give you the document that I captured that changes on for the regulation.
And you'll send out that revised document?
I will, to, to all, everybody.
And we will, we will comment on that.
Yep. Fantastic. Well, if that's it, then we'll adjourn the policy meeting. Thank you very much, and I'll see you from there. Great.